This is in the classroom as to being beneficial. I think that the parents are concerned that 32 a class is not developmentally appropriate. Children learn at that age, learn through socializing and having 30 children trying to learn and socializing in that classroom, I feel that the quiet students are going to be the ones that are going to kind of float under the radar because the ones who are going to be addressed are the children who are academically challenged, socially challenged, are causing behavior issues. So the children who are on grade level and are quiet, they're going to become overwhelmed. And those are the children who I think are most at risk for destructive behaviors in middle school and high school. I think they're at risk for being bullied and I think that that often leads to teen suicide and opioid addiction. So again, I'm just disappointed that the investigation wasn't actually centered on the belief that 30 children in a classroom is not developmentally appropriate for a
Anybody else? Steve Hughes, district resident. I just want to point out, excuse me, that the Ralph R. Smith play is actually on the 20th and 21st. They had to move it because of conflict.
...in the classroom as to being beneficial. I think that the parents are concerned that thirty-two a class is not developmentally appropriate. Children learn, at that age, learn through socializing. And having thirty children trying to learn and socializing in that classroom, I feel that the quiet students are going to be the ones that are going to kind of float under the radar. Because the ones who are going to be addressed are the children who are academically challenged, socially challenged, are causing behavior issues. So the children who are on grade level and are quiet, they're going to become overwhelmed. And those are the children who I think are most at risk for destructive behaviors in middle school and high school. I think they're at risk for being bullied, and I think that that often leads to teen suicide and opioid addiction. So again, I'm just disappointed that the investigation wasn't actually centered on the belief that thirty children in a classroom is not developmentally appropriate for a primary classroom. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Steve, you want?
Steve Hughes, district resident. I just wanted to point out, excuse me, that the Ralph R. Smith play is actually on the twentieth and twenty-first. They had to move it because of conflict.
Oh.
And...
I did not know that.
That's why I wanted to make it public. And also, if you decide to raise the debt ceiling that one year, that's the only year of an increase. Because the next year is actually a decrease from the previous year.
Yeah, it's the two year.
So it's just a one-year increase.
No.
Actually, I think it's two years and then it drops.
No, it's one year, because the second year is slightly smaller than the previous year. So that makes it a decrease from the previous year.
Okay. Anybody else like to address the board? I have a motion to close public participation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Full in favor? Opposed? If you want to comment with...
Yeah. So the direction I had was really to look at the intervention that we did this year for the class size.
Okay.
I am aware that the comments were, I believe, all from families in the other classroom that's a co-taught classroom. So that classroom was designed with a special education teacher with a general education teacher for half the day, and then a teaching assistant the other half of the day. So the concerns about class size are overall number, not ratio. So the ratio right now, if there's twenty-eight students in a class, is fourteen to one. But the overall number is twenty-eight, and started the year at thirty.
I...
So I just want to clarify that, because I know that, but people who are hearing the comments may not be aware that that's the, that there are two different classrooms.
I would say there is no question that much, if not all, of what you say is absolutely true. There are, obviously, lower class sizes are desirable. But we do have certain budgetary realities, shall we call, in the tax cap era. And I know that this board has prioritized keeping programs during the time when we've gotten less money than we should have. So I guess the only thing, I would certainly think that we should spend more time considering what our options are. If there are options, another section is expensive. It would cost a hundred thousand or more. That person would have to go along to first, second, third. By the time they got tenure, considering that we have declining enrollment, this happened to be a bubble, we may end up at a point, four years down the road, where we have an excess teacher, and it's kind of seems hardly fair. It's a difficult situation, and I think it's your duty as a parent to advocate for your child. That's what I would do myself. But running a school district is really hard, and it's, and we have to make decisions that, between X, Y, and Z, sometimes then divert their hard decisions. So I would certainly like to see if there's anything to be done going forward.
And we would look at all large class sizes in the district, because there's quite a few. That's not the only place with twenty-eight students in a classroom, so we're not talking about one new position.
Well, I know.
There's many, many.
I know.
Right, just to be aware.
Redistricting would be a way to do that, but it would also upset a great number of people. So I'm glad you've spoken up, and we will look into it. Not me personally, because that's not my job, but certainly the administrators...
No, Dr. Ochek and I are already planning on that.
Okay. And hopefully, we can come up with something. And Steve, thank you for double, for twice.
May I make a comment?
Yes, yes, you may.
I would just like to address that, too. I thank you for coming forward, and always come forward, you know, always do that. And I know it's not easy, and just so you, you know, it is near and dear, you know, to all of us. We do take it into consideration. My daughter was in one of these bubble class sizes, and she was in a class of about thirty every year in elementary. And it was, it was, it was just the way it had to be for those periods. So it's not that we're not, and it doesn't mean that I'm saying, well, you know, that's just the way it is. That's not my point. My point is that we hear you, and we are trying to address it.
And just to let you know, this has been brought up for the last sixteen years, when my child was also in a thirty-child classroom, very kindergarten, and extremely shy. So, yeah, it was brought up then, too. Ms. Churchill knows. Not Churchill anymore, but back then she was. But, yeah, and Liled Avenue had a huge bubble. But, yeah, it's tough. Parents, we have to take a lot of help to help our child through it. It takes a lot more work on our part. It did on us.
Any other comments? Okay, once again, thank you for coming. That brings us to more discussion. We'll lead it off with a statement about board trustee packets are available from the district clerk. If you want to run for the Board of Education, you need to get the forms, get signatures for thirty-six this year? Thirty-six. And it's easier than you'd think. It's not that hard to get thirty-six signatures, by the way. One year I had to get eighty. So, all right. So, and I would encourage anyone who is interested, you may notice that we only have one female board member, so I would encourage any woman who was interested in running for the board to certainly look into it. We have found that Denise gives us unique opinions on things, and she always asks questions, and it's a good thing, because we all know women are smarter than men, right? Isn't that...
That's very polite.
Okay.
Very polite.
Yes, thank you. All right. The first thing, we were going to discuss about a phenomenon that's in there, is why don't we do the calendar give-back days first? All right? You want to...
Yeah, yeah, I'll...
Explain what the thinking is here?
Yeah, so people may have noticed that there wasn't a message that went out confirming Monday, the twenty-sixth, as one of the give-back days because of the snow day that we just had, that, you know, a message went out about April second, that we do have school that day, and nothing went out about the twenty-sixth yet. And part of that was really waiting to see if we had yet another snow day, and there had to be another message for the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth. And we've been looking into this up until just a few hours ago. The state has changed some of the regulations around attendance days and hours and what you can count, and we're expecting new regulations in April. So just a heads up that the next year's calendar might be a little late in adoption, because we're waiting for that information. So the very latest information, and most people know, or certainly people in this room know, that we need a hundred and eighty days, attendance days, for students. So when we went and double and triple-checked the math, here are the factors. The two half-days we have before Thanksgiving, actually, we, for years, have counted those as days. They actually do not count anymore.
Under the new rules, yeah.
There's not enough hours in that week, and those are when we have parent conferences, and then we have Wednesday off of that week. We are, we count our superintendent's conference days as we are allowed to count them, so we're counting all of them. And then the three half-days at elementary in June will only count if we change them to the afternoon of a professional development day in the afternoon. The teachers have always worked a full day, but we'd have to change that in the calendar and adopt that in the future, you know, in a future meeting, in order to count those days. We've been counting on them the whole time. So given that Thanksgiving change, we are at a hundred and eighty days if we come to school and work on Monday, the twenty-sixth. We thought we had that day as an option to talk about here, because people have made a lot of plans. We've heard from, I would say, handfuls of parents in every building with questions, and, you know, what's happening on Monday, and they've been given the answer. Right now, the calendar says we're in school on the twenty-sixth, and we haven't heard anything yet. So we're waiting for this meeting, and I could repeat any of that for you. I know I talk fast sometimes, so that's where we're at. And we've called Questar and all of that, just to really confirm.
Okay. So assuming your calculations are correct...
And they're not just my personal calculations, or people that know me. This was many other people with math backgrounds made the calculations.
Really smart people?
Yeah, really, not just us, linguistically smart people and socially emotionally smart people.
We're...
Okay.
See? I didn't have two. He only had two. Yeah, well, I'll move this over then. Okay. So we're all on the same page.
So just a question.
Yeah.
The shortened days before Thanksgiving, the only reason they're not counting is because we didn't go to school on Thursday and Friday. They would count if we had parent-teacher conferences on the week before. If I'm looking at this...
We're not even sure about that. What we know for sure, going forward into planning for next year, we don't even know if we had three full days of school, if that would be, they're talking about twenty hours of instructional time. But that's a next-year calendar issue. We know that we only had two half-days of instructional time that weekend, and that does not meet the standard, as they've explained it to us. When we made the calendar, we thought it would.
The third item on the discussion was mid-year review of the board goals. I'm not sure if that, do we have that for, to go up on the screen, or is it just for us? Okay, so it's just for us? So I'm just going to read down through the board goals and what I think we've accomplished. How's that?
Go for it.
Okay. Under academics, receive semiannual updates regarding how New York State learning standards outcomes have been integrated into instructional practice. We had a report by Aviva on February eighth. Receive timely updates on coherency planning initiative twice this year. Greer has done the first one on February the twenty-second of this year. Maintain or increase four-year cohort graduation rate as expressed by the New York School Report Card. That's to be determined, how we're doing. Under board administrative operations, conduct a board retreat by the end of the academic year. We held one February twenty-sixth and talked about financial planning for the next five All board members will attend at least one professional development session, preferably as a group. We did attend a retreat on the twenty-sixth. Under budget administration, create a budget to maintain as many programs as possible, given the tax cap. Any spending reduction should be distributed with equity. Focus closely on actual spending instead of projected rollover numbers. That's what we've been doing in our budget process. And under community, for the board members, attend a community night at each school, personal schedules permitting. And then we would hope that board members will attend at least one. I was at the middle school one, so I've got covered there. But under facilities, receive a formal presentation on the Energy Educator, which was done on January twenty-fifth by Jill. Also, receive a mid-year update on the state of the district facilities. It should include snapshot of facilities issues of the greatest concern. That was presented by Elliot on the February the eighth.
Doug?
Yep.
On the first one that was listed, it says, "Receive a formal presentation on the, from the NHG educator," in June. But the presentation...
Well, she's doing two.
She's doing two. The second one will be in June.
The second one will be in June, I'm sorry. Under policies, review and update all technology policies completed and adopted on January twenty-fifth. Keep up with the flow of incoming policies from NISBA. It's a never-ending flow. We, as of February sixth, we had handled all the ones that came in, but then we got a whole new set of them, so we're still working on those. Make a list of policies that are older than five years and start to review. Jay did do that, and it was a wonderful little chart. And that was completed in August, I guess, of seventeen, and we're working through that. Yeah, all right, so. And you'd be surprised how many are more than five years old. Under technology, we said we would receive two updates regarding how new tech, new technology, I'm sorry, has been integrated into instructional practice. One in January, one in June. Emphasis on how the tech bond money was spent. The first presentation was done by Rick Wirt on January eleventh of this year. So overall, we're not doing too bad, so we'll see how the budget turns out. Okay. Any, are there any questions or additions on that? Okay. So that takes care of that. That was something we postponed from two meetings ago, and I forgot to put it on the last meeting, so that's good to get it on this one. That brings us to board subcommittee reports. Do we have any reports from the last week? I don't think there were any committee meetings at all, no, unless we want to count the ad hoc committee meeting. That's, that's not a committee of the board, though. Yeah. Okay. That brings us to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Full in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Now, let me just get down to the next one. May I have a motion for special education placements, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there?
I've reviewed the packet, recommended its adoption, and presented.
Okay. Full in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Let me just get over here so I can see this. Can I have a motion for eleven point two, the exception of the internal audit report?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there? I think we discussed that last meeting, last Thursday. Full in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Can I have a motion for the general counsel retrainer, the proposal for the next school year? Or is that for the school year? Oh, no, next school year.
Next school year.
The next school year. That's our law firm that we use to resolve any legal issues.
Second.
Any, you know, we got a second? Any discussion on that? All right, full in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And a motion for the sequo, or secr, I guess that is, eleven point four?
So moved.
Second.
Seeker.
Seeker? Is that what it's, that's what it is? There's an R in there, though. Okay. Have we got a second? Any discussion on that? Okay. I just point out that it's necessary in order to do the capital project, that we have to get permission, in fact, that we're not...
Like the environmental approval?
Yeah.
It's the State Environmental Quality Review Act.
Yes, it's the State Environmental Quality Review Act.
Oh, that's good.
Well, he's in the business.
My first rodeo.
He's in the business, though, that's true. All right. All in favor? Thank you. Opposed? There's nobody opposed, right? Okay. Okay, now, these are the biggies here. Can I have a motion for Proposition One, which is the general operating budget to be put before the qualified voters of this district?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there?
But we still, we're going to have to adopt this one again because we don't have the final numbers yet for that one.
Yeah, so every year you adopt a proposition so that Jay can publish the legal notices, and then the next meeting you'll adopt the actual budget.
Okay.
So, nothing will be sent out until we adopt the actual budget?
Correct.
I think Jay has to put a notice in the paper...
Notice that thing, it's coming.
It's coming.
Okay.
Just like spring.
Yes.
All right. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
As soon as it comes in.
Can I have a motion for resolution Prop, Proposition Two, the capital project?
So moved.
Second. Third.
Any discussion on that one?
Yeah, I would just say that, I'll start by endorsing that it's a great project. We need to do this. This is long overdue. This is talking about, you know, renovating science rooms at the high school that are in desperate need, as well as solving or improving the ventilation at the high school, ventilation at North Park, and also heating and ventilation at Havlin. So, all good things, all great things that we...
All at an attractive price as well.
Yeah. I mean, it's the right project, it's the right time, we're in the right place, everybody should be...
Okay.
Think about it, but it's good.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Do we have to take a vote call?
Nope.
No.
Does it answer?
Can I have a motion for eleven seven, which is Proposition Three, bus replacement?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there? Everybody should know what's going on. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. May I have a motion for eleven point eight, adopt resolution calling for the annual meeting of the district. This is a legal notice that's required.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. President, before we get a motion for eleven point nine, I'd like to propose an amendment to eleven point nine.
Don't we have to make it a motion first, and then, in discussion, amend?
Well, parliamentary procedure, I don't know. You probably have to be in, and then ask.
It's probably easier if we have the motion first, otherwise we could modify the motion upfront, but it gets more complicated. Okay?
Okay. So, can I have a motion on the settlement agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion here?
I'd like to move to amend the motion by replacing the phrase, "authorize the payment of ten thousand five hundred dollars and zero cents," and replace it with, "authorize a payment up to ten thousand five hundred dollars and zero cents."
I second.
All right. So, still, we're just going to modify, I just wanted to get this correct. We're just modifying this present thing, and then we're voting on it, right? Or do we have to vote on it?
Vote on the amendment.
Vote on the amendment, then vote on the motion.
All right. All in favor of the amendment? And now we have to vote on the actual thing. I would like to make a comment first, in that what Mr. Minemeier is trying to do, and what he's saying, is let's see if we can get a better deal, in simple words. And if we can, do it. If we can't, then the most we're going to spend is what's listed here. So, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Back to public participation. May I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? If anybody would like to address the board?
Mary Beth Scattergood, fifth-grade teacher at North Park and president of the High Park Teachers Association. I just wanted to ask a clarifying question concerning the district calendar. Was the guidance document of December of two thousand seventeen taken into account for the days counted that said for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, and eighteen school years that those requirements were understood by the state, that the districts would not be able to follow them due to lack of clarification from the state, and that the spring document that should be coming out, then the districts would have to follow for next school year?
I don't know that I can answer that specifically, not because I'm not willing to...
We're still in, so...
Oh, sorry. I'll wait.
That's a reasonable question.
Yeah, because then if that's the case, then currently with the seven snow days, the district is at one hundred and eighty days without having to go into those other two days to have the students come back.
Anybody else like to address the board? May I have a motion to close public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you for bringing that up. We'll look into it. Kind of a legally, legal issue there, I guess, you know, which is always tricky as to who, who you, you know, when you get lawyers involved, I just got to tell you, it could go either way. But we certainly should do due diligence and look at that.
Yeah, I'd like to say something. So, today I called Questar, the state aid and financial planning service. It's Questar Three BOCs. I asked for some guidance. They directed me to the most recent information that's on NISBA's website, and we talked specifically about the two days of the Thanksgiving break, and they stated that there are school districts right now that are being audited by the state, and they're being told that they would need to have the minimum number of hours in that week if they also had professional development or parent-teacher conferences that week. And we didn't have that. Plus, in the guidance, it specifically talks about that break, too, is not counting towards days that students are in session if we don't meet the minimum hours for that week.
Not that document, it's the two thousand, December fifth, two thousand seventeen document.
Yeah. Do you mind if I look at this? So, I printed this today, and at the end of it, it stated which documents were incorporated into this. So, the most recent, the most recent one that they had incorporated was from two thousand seventeen, it was from June, so it wasn't anything from December. But according to Questar, we aren't allowed to count those two days towards the one hundred and eighty-day requirement.
So, yeah, what I started saying in the middle of public participation early was that we made a direct live call to get some guidance on that because we do have competing documents that say two different things, and we weren't sure how to interpret that.
Okay, so, just to make sure, we're talking here, is this a, this is a done deal? We have determined, we, not, the district has determined that we...
The guidance we got, again, from Questar Three BOCs, whether we choose to go with that, what's at stake is the aid of one hundred and three thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars a day if we make a decision that we're, and end up with what they call one hundred and seventy-nine days. That's what's at stake. And certainly there, just like Mary Beth is saying, there could be a justification for reading that document and saying those days will count this year, or we go with Questar Three's recommendation not to use them.
Do you know if there's any recourse that Mary Beth could take in order to either state her case or get this changed if it, I mean...
No, I'm just reading the state document that says that these changes will not come in effect officially until the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year.
I think there's new...
And she did share that with us yesterday.
I think there are new regulations that'll come out this spring for next year. The information that we looked up does pertain to this year. At least, that's what I was told. And I was told that there are school districts undergoing audits right now for that.
Well, I would, I would say that there is at least some discussion as to whether it's this year or next year, and I think perhaps that the administrators should meet with the HPTA union.
So, we're talking about Monday.
And talk about, I mean, let's, you know, let's give it a fair shot here.
Well, I mean, it sounds like the time's running out here.
Well, it is, it is, but...
I mean, we're not in argument. We just all want to do the right thing and not get...
Correct.
Right. We're not, I would like that to be true. I don't have confirmation on that, though.
So, I guess, here's where we are. We've got one more business day before it happens tomorrow. So, the question is, what happens if, in the course of tomorrow, you decide something different? Do we need, is board action needed?
No, I wouldn't think so.
Well, you adopt the calendar.
It's changing the calendar.
Changing the calendar, yeah. Yeah, so that's my point. So, if, I mean, and certainly I would encourage whoever needs to get together to review this, you know, if there, in fact, is something that hasn't been included in your decision-making process, your recommendation, or your...
And I'm not sure who's above Questar Three BOCs...
Yeah.
Because they are the state aid department, and that's what you call...
And I'm not sure anybody is. I guess that's the point.
Right.
You want to, you know, if there's a matter of double-checking, how, is there a way...
Who could promise us that we're okay to take Monday off? That we're not going to get audited and fined one hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
What's that?
You know, I would want confirmation from someone at the state ed department to say, "You can take Monday off, and we're not fining you one hundred and thirty thousand dollars." Right. We were not able to get that today.
Is there, is there another thing that we can look into if we have to adopt the calendar? Is there something we can do later in the year to make up a day? I mean, we have the half-days at the end of the year.
We already need them.
We already...
You already need those days. We don't have any more superintendent's conference days. It could be turned into a, an education day.
A memorial day is a holiday. Memorial day is a holiday.
Yeah, memorial day. So, there just, there's not, there's no more flexibility once you get past next week.
That's my question. I mean, there's not a half-day later on that we can turn into a full day?
It's not even a matter of...
That wouldn't be doing it. That wouldn't do it.
We already count it all, our half-days.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know if there's some way to adopt things in such a way that we have that flexibility tomorrow to see if we can get that kind of confirmation, and then you've already approved Plans A and B and then just rescind one. I don't know.
I would like, at the very least, that you meet with...
Yeah, and we met yesterday, but we'll meet again. Again, we're not in disagreement.
As early tomorrow as again.
Of course, of course.
Because...
I guess the question is, what action do we have to take tonight?
Or is there any action we could take tonight?
I don't think we have to take any action.
All right.
We, well, we have actually discussed that. We didn't, we discussed...
They changed the calendar. We have to, we have to vote on that. Is that correct?
You would have to adopt a calendar that says something other than that the twenty-sixth is a give-back day.
Oh, correct, because we already published it. That's correct. That's correct. Tough one. I don't see much hope for you there, but I would certainly not give up. I mean, I mean, what can I tell you?
Words of comfort.
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking, what if you adopted the twenty-sixth being off tonight, and then if we have to, and we won't send a message to all the parents, and people who are watching this will know that it's up in the air, we'll make a decision, send a message out, and then if it turns out that everyone has to come to school on Monday, then you re-adopt the original calendar at your next meeting.
We would have to adopt it on the condition...
Something like that.
On the condition that we wouldn't be going against...
I just adopt it in a way that says what's really happening.
I don't, I don't think we should do that tonight. I don't think we should do that tonight.
No, the best information we have is that we need to be in school on Monday. I don't know how we change that now. I think we make a decision and stick to it.
Well, we already have made the decision.
I know, I know.
Okay. All right, so, we'll see what happens, I guess. All right. That brings us to other matters deemed necessary by the board. Anybody have anything other than what we've discussed? All right. There is no need for a second exec session. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? No? No? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.